With that, we will start with Student of the Month. And we will start with Bella, with Mr. Chris.
Bella, Student of the Month, Ms. Adeline Johnson. Adeline was the letter F in the alphabet parade. Led the balloon parade with the color pink. Was the letter for the fire truck tour. Read two Dr. Seuss books with her class during the Read Across America Day program. Named the queen of pre-K proms in her mom and dad's highs. Hobbies include playing with her 20 pets, especially Sunny. Her big red hen. She also loved to dress up in her Disney princess gowns. Future plans includes Adeline would like to someday be a teacher because she loves watching her mom work in fashion. Congratulations.
Uh, Mr. Joe, you got Cotton Court?
Amari Brown. Amari's third grader at Cotton Court Elementary. His teachers are Miss Allison, Mr. Kianpe, Miss Tamika, Miss Brandy. His favorite subject is English Language Arts. His academic achievements include he grew 40 points in I-Ready. This year, his grade A's in ELA all year have received the following awards. Positive Behavior Citizenship Endiveles. Divels had the highest divel score by 41 points according 523. His hobbies are playing outside, reading, playing sports, spending time with his family, going to church. His future plans are to be a police officer. Congratulations.
Adeline, you have Wolf Car.
Okay, we have our entertainment.
Congratulations.
His teachers, Ms. Abby Dunn. Uh, his favorite subject is math. His academic achievements are he was a Student of the Month and he scored above all the divels end-of-year scores. Hobbies include playing outside, spend time with his family, and playing games. He wants to be a construction worker and build houses.
Okay, Ms. Amy, you have Marksville Elementary?
Ellie Farman. Is Ellie here?
No. I will sit, we'll sit tight in case she gets here shortly. Okay, Mr. Ricky, you got Plushville?
Damani Williams.
Damani Williams? No. Okay. Ms. Ricky, you also have Riverside?
Kennedy Crystal. Kennedy is in second grade at Riverside Elementary. His teachers are Mr. Vons, Ms. Victoria. Favorite subject is reading. Academic achievements? Kennedy benchmarked on the end-of-year divels. His hobbies? He likes to play basketball with his friends. His future plans? Kennedy plans to join the FBI when he grows up. Congratulations.
Okay, Avols High School, Mr. Key?
Evan Souchet. A student of Avols High is teaching with Mr. Michael Moore Law. Ms. Alicia Williams, Bailey Goche, and Ms. Brianna McCarron. His favorite subject is ELA. His academic achievements are A B Honor Roll, Most Improved English One student. His hobbies are fishing, video games, exercising, footballing, jogging. His future plans? He wants to go to college and always own business one day. Congratulations.
Mr. Gill, you have Bucky Magnet High?
Bucky Magnet High School Student of the Month is Quintoria Holt.
Okay, Mr. Robin, you have LaSass?
Yes, ma'am. Dawson Rebus. Dawson is in the 10th grade at LaSass. His teachers are his Humble, his Brandy, and his Green. His favorite subjects are English II and Algebra I. His academic achievements in school activities? He has earned several academic achievements, including awards for chess and FFA Awards, where I developed skills in leadership and responsibility. His hobbies outside the classroom is to be involved in sports such as tribal volleyball and tribal basketball and golf. His plans are that he's looking forward to graduate from high school and attend a Native American college, plan to study culinary arts, and pursue his dream of becoming a chef. I am passionate about travel and cultures and hope to work as a flight attendant on the side, combining my love of future and adventure. Overall, I strive to live the purpose, learn from every opportunity, and represent my community with pride. Congratulations.
Ms. Latasha, you have Marksville?
Marksville High School Student of the Month is Ms. Abigail Mudge. Abigail is in the 11th grade. Her teachers are Ms. DeGolde Sale, Keith Edwards, and Masina Croft. Her favorite subjects: English and Agro-science. Academic achievements: School activities. She's Beta Club Officer for two years, FFA President for two years, Agro-science, IBCS, English Clef Mastery and Advanced Leap Score, A and A B Honor Roll, and dual enrollment at LSUA. Her hobbies include babysitting, hanging out with friends and family, and going to the river. Her future plan? She plans to attend Ole Miss and get a bachelor's degree in elementary education and teach kindergarten. Congratulations, Abby.
Before you move on, you wanted to say something, Chris?
Yes, uh... We have, we have never really done this before, but I just, I wanted to kind of highlight a conversation that I had with the individual who was just nominated for Student of the Month. I had the pleasure of meeting this particular individual on Friday morning. He didn't know that I was a board member and neither did I know that he was a student in our parish. Uh, we just happened to be sitting in the same room on Friday morning. And I met this, uh, well-groomed gentleman here. And if you don't mind, would you also like to speak or just make a mention of what you do with, um, the youth in the parish?
Um, so just with the youth in the community and the parish, I am on the Youth Council for the Tunica Biloxi Tribe. And we work with a lot of youth members and, um, the community a lot by showing our pride and culture, so.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, we'll move on to item number five. Recognition of Teacher of the Month for April 2025.
All right, um, I always have the honor of recognizing our Teacher of the Month each month. And, um, this is the last one for the school year. So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight because I know it was difficult. It's the last day of school. So that shows how dedicated you are. You didn't say, "Well, I'm not coming." So thank you for coming out. So beginning with Bucky Elementary Learning Academy, Ms. Joanie Roy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cotton Court Elementary, Mr. Nick Joffeau. Lefarge Elementary, Ms. Melissa Bordelon.
Congratulations.
Puyolshville Elementary, Ms. Bickin Duke Ford. I know she's not here tonight. I skip a school, Marksville Elementary, Ms. Lisa LaBord.
Have to make sure I pick up the right flag. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Riverside Elementary, Ms. Carly Cologne. Avols High School, Mr. Ryan Brenyon. Bucky Magnet High School, Ms. Elizabeth Mayu.
That girl?
Yes.
You know, but you know. Please, we do know. Congratulations.
Thank you. TikTok star here in case you... I'm gonna wave your speech.
Okay. Okay, now look, we got cameras over here too.
This way, too.
Are we good with cameras?
We're good.
Good, all right.
LaSass, of Miss Brandy Point. And Marksville High School, Ms. Mala Drewin.
Congratulations. And just like, ooh, a bunch of canyons. Okay, congratulations.
Item number six, recognition of 2026 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Amy.
So I have the honor of introducing to you the Teachers of the Year. Last month, we had our district-wide contest. And so each school has a representative in the elementary level, and then the high schools have a middle school level and a high school level. And those come to, um, the boardroom here and interview for the district-level position. So we're going to introduce to you the school-level winners and the district winner, um, this evening. So from Bucky Elementary, we have Ms. Phyllis Morris.
Lisa's younger than me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And look, we're gonna go all the way around the room. So we got cameras back in the back. Look, we got cameras over to the left. Congratulations. Now look, I might ask you to stand right here.
Okay.
Oh, wait, oh, wait. Okay. Okay, and then if you'll just say, "Thank you, Ms. Phyllis."
From Cotton Court Elementary, Ms. Charlotte Kyle.
Okay. So look, I think our cameras are in the back. All right. Oh, one more, one more. No, two more. Okay, one more.
From Lefarge Elementary, Ms. Valerie Bordelon.
Congratulations. Okay. It's good. Is that being his fault? Congratulations.
From Plushville Elementary, Ms. Amanda Goche.
Okay, did y'all get one? Okay.
From Riverside Elementary, Ms. Amber Bordelon. Marksville Elementary, Ms. Brooke Anderson. She is also a district winner for the elementary.
We're gonna take some pictures here first. Okay, oh. Okay, now we're gonna get one from Ms. Amy. Okay, so I'm gonna hold this one. I'm gonna give you this one. Because this is district and the... So now we all have to picture all over again with more flags. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the middle school level. We've got Ms. Rhonda Andrews from Monkey High. From LaSass, William Morrow.
Thank you.
From Marksville High, Ms. Jasmine Williams. And our district-level winner is from Avols High, Michelle Newsom.
Congratulations. And Ms. Amy? Did you already announce that far? Oh, I missed that far. Okay, and District Teacher of the Year with the J. I'm gonna give you this one. I'll hold this one. Congratulations. Congratulations. I want to be all together.
And last but not least, our high school level. From Bucky High School, Mr. Dan Murphy.
We're gonna take a selfie, right? Yeah, we're good, we're good. We can still get a picture, right? I like, it's over here.
From LaSass, Ms. Katie Green. From Marksville High, Ms. Jacqueline Jordan.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. They're all sitting together.
Hang on, Miss Karen. I didn't get y'all.
We didn't get y'all, baby.
Lost count.
Okay. And then from Avols High and our district winner for the high school level, Ms. Alicia Williams.
Congratulations. We do, we gonna do it. Look, you seen us, Laura?
Oh, oh, hey.
Good. And then we have this. And then we get to do it twice.
Okay. But you also get the district.
Same age?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Ms. Laura? District. Okay.
Now, I am. Hello. Let me picture. I know my hands are still down.
Okay, oh, some more?
Yeah, right, look over there with everybody. Lot, we take a lot of pictures. One, two, three. Good job.
Okay. And before we dismiss you for pictures, we have one more. I'm looking for Ms. Kim. Oh, there's Ms. Kim. Is she here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she's over here.
Oh, I, I just was looking for her and I never thought... Okay, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Kim. Ms. Kim Adams is the principal at Lefarge Elementary, and she has a, a national honor we want to make sure that you know about.
Yeah, it's, good evening, everyone. It's not every day that we get to celebrate excellence that spans both our state and the nation. This evening, it's my honor to recognize a truly outstanding educator, Ms. Chantelle Haddaway, who has not only been named the 2024 Louisiana State Forum Bureau Ag in the Classroom Teacher of the Year, but has also gone on to earn the prestige title of 2025 National Forum Bureau Teacher of, uh, the Year for Ag in the Classroom.
Congratulations.
Thank you, babe.
Ms. Hat, as we call her at Lefarge, has taken ag literacy more beyond the textbook, engaging students in meaningful and real, real-world learning that connects classrooms to the form, the environment, and our future. This recognition is a testament not just to teaching excellence, but to innovation, passion, and leadership that sets a statewide and national standard. Her passion, creativity, and commitment of putting both her students and our district on the national map.
Yes. If you ever get the opportunity and you are out Lefarge's way, you cross the river and there you are. Um, she has chickens. They raise vegetables. Her kids eat those vegetables. She cooks it for them. And so they have got the best, the best palates. I mean, they will taste anything and they like everything. But the chickens are pretty cool, I will have to tell you that. So I'm gonna give you a second, anything?
We have ducks now.
We have ducks, we have ducks now. And there are cats everywhere.
We down for three cats.
Okay, okay, I don't know if that's good or bad. Um, you wanna say anything?
I just want to thank everybody that's helped me get to where I'm at because it took a village. It took a village. My husband, uh, Mr. Lynn, he's probably sick of me because I text and call him all the time. If there's a problem, he comes running. And his wife, Ms. Rose, and my mother, and, um, all my coworkers.
Boys and the girls. And I'm glad.
Yeah, this morning I had a little problem. I'm like, "Can you come, can you come?" He goes, "I gotta be somewhere, but I'll be there." So he came and took care of it. But anyway, I couldn't make it without everybody. And the kids just love it. I just wish more teachers would do it.
We're gonna work on that.
Get more involved because you, you truly gonna see, um, them grow. Just amazing.
So, board members, if you haven't had a chance, I've only been once. But if you haven't had a chance to go see her operation, please go. I was there for 10 minutes and I had about three children. One of them, they made me dig up, I had to sweep up bugs to feed to the chickens.
Okay.
I had a list of chores to do, but it was...
You have to work from your living room.
I had a list of chores to do, it was interesting. They promised me vegetables, I didn't get them yet, but that's okay. But I am just so impressed at what you have going on over there. So, we're very shocked, please go by and see if you can.
Yes.
We are very proud of you.
We'll tour, congratulations.
Okay, now, more pictures. This is Ms. Amy in the white shirt. If you will follow Ms. Amy, Teachers of the Year, Teachers of the Month, Students of the Month. If you will follow Ms. Amy to the back, we're gonna try to get some more pictures before we cut you loose. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Item, item eight through 14 is information items. Item number eight, behavioral academy overview. Ms. Della?
All right, good evening. Ms. Tuta asked me to tell you a little bit about our behavior academy. So actually, behavior academy is focused on targeted life skills through interventions. And what we did, we targeted our awareness group. We wanted to kind of pilot before we continued it for next new year. So our awareness groups for Bella, High Point Elementary, and Bunkey High, and Marksville High. So mid semester, we were concerned about the number of suspension as well as kids being sent to ABA. So what we did, we met Ms. Jenny for discipline records. So we wanted to target the area in which we saw where it was more disciplined and we wanted to have the kids to be a part of the behavior academy to address those concerns. And so through the behavior academy, we did see some improvement. And in one school, when we would go out to meet with our social workers because those were ones who were conducting the behavior academy. So when we went to one of the schools, they said that through the behavior academy, it forced them to communicate with parents. And by having parents involved, it helped to focus on discipline. And so they saw improvement. So I have Ms. Jenny, and she's going to give you a little bit more of information about the behavior academy.
And so we were very pleased with the results. And the goal was, you know, we tried to keep it very, very simple. The goal was to reduce exclusionary discipline, keep them on campus for them not to go to ABA. And these were students who were pretty much one suspension away from going to ABA. And so when, at the end of the year, I ran the numbers, we were 82% successful of all the students that participated in behavior academies in these targeted skills. So going forward, of course, we want to expand this. We were in four schools. We want to be in 10 schools. And so beginning tomorrow, we formed teams which are gonna function as a train-the-trainer model. And we're gonna train these teams to go back and train at the school level in the tiers of behavior. Behavior academies were one tier of three tiers. And try to really make an impact in discipline. And this is training that we are thankful that you allowed us to go to throughout the school year in some different places where we took teams. And it was just some really good strategies that we were able to bring back to our schools. At this point, through the, by the end of June, we will have had six trainees with these teams. So again, thank you for your support in this. We were pleased so far with the success rate. And we hope we can continue to make an impact. I want to give you very much a shout out. Thanks, Tuta.
That is a big deal. 82% that didn't go back. You know, we'd like to put Mike out of business over there, but.
There you go, huh?
It's a spell.
No, they didn't go at all, not at all.
At all. So, so we're getting really good feedback. Kids are talking about, this is what I needed. And y'all, that's what we have to do right. Give kids what they need.
And we were worried about the high schools that didn't not be receptive. But one of the social workers said at the high school, the kids, they, this is their safe place. And that's what we want.
Okay, so I can answer questions. Somebody asked me to put this on the agenda. So I did want to give you an opportunity if you got questions.
Any questions?
Are we good?
Yeah. Item number nine. I don't have a question. I just, so. I've been there to visit Mr. Mike and his staff several times. They're doing a great job over there. Those kids are, whenever they do return to their home school, they are behaving. And they, they do feel welcomed and appreciated, and they do feel heard over there.
Well, we actually, since you threw my name in, I won't say something. We actually did a number, because it was my SLT, so I wrapped it up. And 93% of the kids that were sent to me, they were all expelled. And they were sent to us. We saved basically nine out of 10 of them that I didn't have to send them. So they're coming to us and we can, we have the opportunity to give a more smaller group, individualized, less temptation to screw up. So I don't think it's me or my staff, but it's what y'all produced at ABA, being smaller like that, that saved some of these kids that if ABA didn't exist, would just go home. Like it used to be when I went to school. If you got expelled, we went home, see you next year. You failed. But it's something that, for future, is something we always have to have because if we don't, if we don't keep the kids in the school system and we send them home, things that I know all of y'all here happen on the street, is gonna happen with those kids.
And we want to try and keep kids respectful and to ABA. I know it's this great environment and you're doing a wonderful job. But our goal is to keep kids in school. So that's why we want to teach them some coping skills and some life skills that they will be successful in school and that also they won't return back to ABA if they do that.
Do you have a number of how many students? I said 82 were able to stay in their schools.
Uh, we worked with about 100 students in the four schools that we dealt with. And we targeted very specific behaviors in the academy. So fighting was an example. You know, and so in eight weeks, a behavior academy runs for eight weeks. Either you graduate from the academy at the end of eight weeks or we put you back in it. But the still, the goal is, even if we have to put you back in it, prevent the fight. You know, and teach them skills to make another choice.
Thank y'all.
Any other questions?
Item number nine, discussion of the summer feeding program and the summer feeding kickoff.
Oh, so this past Saturday, we had our summer feeding kickoff. We did it at Cogford Elementary like we did last year. We had a really great day, a good turnout. We had water slides, we had hamburgers and hot dogs. We did, we did snowball. We had a snowball booth there, cotton candy, popcorn. We had Rebecca Lamoin was there handing out books from, I think she had some extra from her vending machine in Closerville. So at the end of the day, every child left with more information about summer feeding, with some sort of fresh produce and with a book. And their bellies were all full. So it was a really great day. We had a lot of staff there and, like I said, it was a good turnout. So all of this, as you know, is in preparation for our summer feeding kickoff. We celebrate it because we have such big numbers. For the last two years, we have gotten reviewed by the state every summer because in a Boils Parish, we do the top 10% of non-congregative feeding in the state, which is not something that I like to have to deal with, but we are proud that we have that high, that high percentage. So that being said, we're starting our program June 2nd. We've been pushing it out on Facebook. Kind of like last year, we're still doing the survey. The parent goes on and puts the parent name and guardian information, where they would like to pick their box up at, the child's name and date of birth. On our backend, we're checking all that information to make sure that nobody's name is listed at two locations or that the date of births are correct. Remember, it's for all children 18 and under. And then on the day that they come, they will bring their actual form that's found on the website or on Facebook. And that's what we'll use to check against our list that we have on our live document. The locations are Riverside, Lefarge, Marksville Elementary, Bunkey High School, and a Boils High, as it's been for the last several years. And we're gonna operate June 2nd through July 21st. They'll have eight weeks of receiving food boxes, seven day, seven breakfasts, and seven lunches. So I just wanted to give y'all all an update on what's going on. It is very similar to last year, but it will be kicking off next week. And if y'all have any questions.
I don't have a question, but I'll see it all over social media as parents are excited.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for coming to.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Jenny.
Item number 10, discussion of board members' travel. Mr. Lynn?
Oh, actually, I didn't ask for travel. I asked for the conference cost. I didn't get back with y'all that. But I do know.
You got that in those documents? It was in those documents.
I didn't get it. I mean, I just didn't find it.
Oh, okay.
I just didn't see it.
Okay.
But that's okay.
I can, I can do.
If you could redo it, send it to me, please. First of all, when I campaigned before, the public had a lot of things to say about conference costs and that kind of stuff that was done by the board prior to us, the board before us. And, but I did notice one thing. First of all, as far as travel, I've never claimed travel in all my years. And I've never claimed food reimbursement. I just never have. But on the conference cost, I know capital conference, all nine of us registered at $225 apiece. There was one canceled because of, you know, and they were able, Stacy was able to get the money back. Four of us attended. So those that didn't attend, we lost $900. So we just need to be frugal and careful. You know, when we tell Stacy, okay, sign us up, we need to follow up with that. Now, I do know about emergencies, believe me. And those kind of things, if it's excused, that's fine. That's like missing board meetings. If it's excused, I understand that because I've had excuses, you know, myself. But I just think that we just need to be careful in how we do this. Especially when it's tax favored, but.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I kind of was hoping that we do something like some more in-house training for far, something here, you know, maybe finance, maybe, you know, like they do in other places so that those of us who just really don't want to go out and venture and attend all these conferences can do so. And, you know, because I think, what if we require six hours? And, you know, once you get you six hours and then after that, above and beyond, that's just you on your own doing those things, you know? But anyway, I like to see more of that. An insurance thing like we did with Noel, a finance thing like we did with Ms. Mary, several things like that I think need to be done and can be done right here.
We'd like to do that.
I agree, you know, it would cost us nearly as much for the board as for the board and so forth. We can do that. We can add some.
And if you've got suggestions about specific topics, send them to us and we will get those pieces.
And I like that last year's conversation. Did we send it?
Yes, sir. It's in the news. I'll show you. We know you didn't. Yes, we, no, it was A. And, and we did have, we did have people who canceled and when they canceled early, we got their money back. But we had a number who didn't cancel and that cost us whatever.
Let me ask another question while we're on that topic. So the capital conference, who are we paying to promote capital conference? I thought we were just going there to meet with them.
So let's be the sponsors.
So we paying them? And what's their cost to rent the place?
Oh, no, I can't answer that.
I can, I can. Okay. And so any conference, whoever it's put on by, that was put on by Louisiana School Board Association. So they rent the Hilton, they, the lunch, they pay for the coffee pots, they pay for the bottles of water.
A bus. Don't y'all ride a bus?
It's a bus, it's security, and then that's what it goes to.
And that, all that's expensive.
Oh, yes. And that's why we quit going to New Orleans and the conferences now are in Lake Charles because our coffee was $200 versus.
Yeah.
Not, not the store costs.
No, no.
You know, and I'm glad, it is, it's a lot for us to travel. It is, it's hard. But I think it's an investment into the district. And we have made so many relationships and it's all about relationships. And anybody needs anything, just know about, we could call any district right now, any parish in Louisiana, and we have national contacts too. And we're only as good as the people we surround ourselves with. And we're always looking for stuff. And it's not fun to sit in the airport on a Sunday and have a three-hour delay meeting with Chris, going nail bones. But we did it. We worked through it. So. President, could I say, now, I'll say this, Ms. Lynn, like people canceling, I know there's emergencies. I had to get up and leave one time and I looked at Ms. Tuta and I said, let me know what I owe. And we, we worked it out and I think I didn't claim travel anyway. I was a hometown line and she, I think I felt her good cost. So, you know, things happen, but, you know, if we're repetitive and it keeps happening and you have to come and say, okay, look, you've done it. I don't mind coming up with some kind of policy to reimburse the board, and I think we should. But I, I mean, I'm on the fence. I do think we need training for sure. I don't think we need our six hours and then shut the door. We, bus view, we found bus view at one of the conferences, which has saved us a ton of money. There are, there's pros and cons to it, and I just think maybe we need to form some little ad hoc or just sit and talk and kind of find a good happy medium. You know, we'll spend X amount per board member. Once you get your amount, you're, you're, something, you know, I'm open to that. But I do think we need training, you know? And unfortunately, it costs. It's my, my baby.
Item number 11, sales tax report for the month of April 2025. Ms. Jessica?
Hey, everyone. Our sales tax collections for April totaled $1,077,813. This is a $36,344,990 increase, which is a 3.49% increase of this April to last April. Our motor vehicles totaled $178,365.80. It's up by 1.13%. We have not completed any audits for April, so our year-to-date audit collection stays the same. Our calendar to date, our total collections are $3,895,651.58. So we're 1.24% increase of '25 compared to '24. And our fiscal year comparison, to date, we have collected $9,480,507.90, which is a 0.24% increase from '24 to '25 compared to '23 to '24. Any questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item number 13, monthly general fund, 2024-2025, year-to-date report with comparisons. Ms. Mary? Monthly maintenance report on expenditures. Anybody got any questions on that? Item number 13, monthly general fund, 2024-2025, year-to-date report with comparisons.
Okay, so what we have here, have the balance sheet for March of '25 as compared to March of '24 with a year-to-date number. So we've got $27.8 million in assets and liabilities as compared to last year with $26.1. Any questions? Okay, revenues and expenditures. So although the revenues as of March 25 compared to '24, we have a total of $44.6 million. I'm sorry, $36 million as of March 25 compared to $34.6 million in revenues. So there's an increase over last year. Of course, a lot of that is timing. In June, we'll see the real picture. And expenditures, year-to-date, 30, 20. And expenditures, year-to-date, 26.9 versus 27 last year. Any questions? I'll have another budget revision for y'all next month. And we did, this does not include the sales tax. 2011 ad lorum and sales tax that we issued in, for last month. The 2001,000, they got it approved again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Item number fourteen, personnel changes, Ms. Delman.
All right, so the personnel changes tonight should be quite a few resignations because we do have our retirees return to work within, and then we do have some people who are retired. So that's what you should see, and then some transfers. One thing I wanted to say is that you probably will see several vacancies per school, but I just wanted to let you know, remember, we do advertise for vacancies for our critical shortage people in order for them to return back to work. So when you see many of those positions, don't be alarmed, a lot of them are for our critical shortage people.
All right, next items are items number fifteen through thirty-four consent items.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I move that we adopt those items.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin.
Pull anyone out in particular.
I just have one question. Go ahead. Number twenty-five, that Kerrwell 3,000, that is the headphone that reads the children? Miss Dawn?
Yes.
Okay, and that's 37,948 years?
No.
Three years.
Three years.
For three years, and that's all of our schools are included?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Additional side licenses.
Thank you for the clarification.
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm excited for the student that will be attending the summer program at LSD.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yes. Thanks to the bus drivers, who are driving here.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I'll second that motion.
Got a second on this, Jill? Any questions on this question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items, consent item fifteen, thirty-four, approved. Action items, number thirty-five, recommendation to approve the resident teacher stipend proposal, Ms. Delman.
So this is something that I'm excited about. We had attended a training, and there was a representative from LSUA, and she was talking about the work that she does with many of the school districts where they sign a contract, which is what you see in front of you, whereas they have teacher residents, and the residents then work in the schools for a year, two semesters. And in order for them to qualify to be a teacher resident, they have to have passed all their practice exams. So by the time they finish this year, they are certified teachers, and they have to commit to work in the district in which they do their teacher residence. So the cost that you see at the bottom is, of that cost, $3,300 comes from LDOE. And it's like an offset because they're not, they cannot work. So this is money that they will receive in order, you know, to help pay for gas and so on and so forth. And so it'll be a total of $8,800 if they work in an A, B, or C school, and $10,800 if they work in a D, or F school. And remember, they have to commit to work in the district after they finish this, and this will help with our certified teachers.
Mr. President, before I make that motion, I would, Ms. Delman just said something, and not, not to backtrack on, on what we previously discussed, but she said that she attended a training, and that's the perks of going to these types of places, not just for admin, but for board members as well. But with that being said, I would like to make a motion to adopt that resident teacher stipend proposal.
Ms. Mary, Ms. Delman.
I'll second that motion, and I want to say I printed this out, and I've had it on my desk, and I've read it about ten times in the last few days that we had it. I think it's amazing, and I think it's very innovative, and I think it's looking outside the box, and it's recruitment, and all of the things that we were talking about, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
I've got another question.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we have a, didn't we have that in place at one point? Where you worked at a school and you got a stipend?
You still get that.
That was during state.
Did we have that? Do we still have that?
Yes, this is the LDOE.
Yeah, okay.
But this is, this is, yes, but this is after you have graduated, is what you're referring to.
What I'm referring to is at one point in time, if you worked at a failing school system.
Oh, yes, yes.
That would give you X amount of dollars to work at.
That was.
But I can remember a couple of the names at that time, I'm not gonna name them right now.
Yes.
But that was in place.
And that was good grand.
Okay.
Any more discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number thirty-five, passed. Item number thirty-six, recommendation to approve the contract agreement between the Vols Parish School Board and Delta Engineering Group slash Fusion Architects.
That's me. Y'all looked at this contract a couple of times. You gave us permission last month to do some work on it. We did some more work on it, you got in the newsletter some of the things that we tweaked, and we're ready now to get this approved. There are many steps to this, but I think in terms of what you have to do right away, this is the last one in your list for now. And I say for now because that may not be the same next week. But we would like to get this in place. These guys are doing a lot of work, and we need to make sure we've gotten this contract in place.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill to approve the contract agreement between the.
No, Jill.
Jill.
Okay.
To approve the contract between the Vols Parish School Board and Delta Engineering Group slash Fusion Architects. And we've got a second on Mr. Robin. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-seven, recommendation to approve the act of correction or amendment cash document between a Vols Parish School Board and a Vols Real Estate Holdings LLC, a Vols Hospital.
Thank you. So we're excited to have Mr. Curry with us tonight. He has done some work with Derek and with Charles, and they've taken a look at the contract, and there, there are a couple of little glitches in it. One being that if something happens, the property reverts back to us. Jim, you want to say anything about what you're doing?
Yeah, thank y'all for having me. But basically, what, what we're requesting to be amended is we basically self-funded that project over there. Many of y'all that have driven by the Bunky, the old adjacent center, have seen the work that we've done in a short period of time. But roughly about $3 million self-funded into that project. In order for the bank to lend us the money to basically reimburse us, they have to be, if, if we were to go and default, they had, they have to be the guarantor, right? Or the one that would, that would fall back on. So that's basically all we're asking to be amended within that cell document. Derek, I don't know if you'd like to elaborate, but you and I have talked.
Yeah. So there's a clause in the sale that says they're not to open schools there, basically. And if they do, that it reverses to the school board. And he's asking for that, they're asking for that to be taken out. Because evidently, it's caused some problems, but they're funding it from the bank.
Amy.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the act of correction in the PCHA medi cash document between the Vols Parish School Board and a Boils Real Estate Holdings LLC, a Boils Hospital. I'll second that, Mr. President.
Got a second on Mr. Jill.
Okay, no problem.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Jill to approve the act of correction amendment cash document between the Vols Parish School Board and the Vols Real Estate Holdings LLC, a Vols Hospital. Any questions or comments on it?
And it looks great what y'all are doing, and Amy's fantastic.
Thank y'all, we appreciate it. And you know, there's several other projects I'm working with, Mr. Aaron, on. You know, one, that mobile RHC bus that we're looking at doing within the schools and being able to travel around to each of the schools and, and bring healthcare, and more so do like wellness visits to a lot of the kids that don't really, you know, they go, they're in those underserved areas that don't have the luxury of being able to have their wellness visits. You'd be surprised the amount of kids that have never seen a doctor, right? Much less just have just a normal wellness exam. So those are things that we're working towards as local hospital and being able to partner with the school board and give it to the community and take care of our future. So thank y'all for having me, then.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-eight, request to accept a Vols Parish School Cafeteria Hood Replacement Bid from Rust Construction LLC for the base bid amount of $552,767, and the amount of the alternate for $4,477, which the total bid with alternate one for $5,557,244.
So we put out a bid for redoing the hoods at Marksville High, Bunky Elementary, and a Boils High. Rust was the only one that came to our pre-bid meeting, so thus, and they were the only ones that came and put in a bid. But this price was right about at mark where we were expecting it to be. I think the estimate by the architect was $500,000 on the bid. So it came in just a little bit above that. The alternate that's included is to add air curtains at the back doors.
So that is about what you expected to happen.
Mr. Robin? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin and a second by Ms. Jill to accept the Vols Parish School Cafeteria Hood Replacement Bid from Rust Construction LLC for the base bid amount of $552,767. Now, are we, are we, y'all making a motion for the alternate price?
Yes, for the whole package.
The whole package.
And the amount of the alternate, number one, for $4,477, with the total bid, the alternate one, for $557,244. There.
What's the funding source? This is coming out of fund over one. So this is an allowable expense for our school to do, so this will come out of our main school.
Any questions or comments?
The cafeterias?
Yes.
If you need to add that to, you don't add that to the motion, the funding source?
Okay. I'm gonna add the funding source.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-nine, recommendation to approve the Vols High School ROTC classroom and store room project not to exceed the amount of $23,480, Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, this is for the new program that you're gonna have at Boils High School. Trying to look around. How would you describe where that, that's in the back of the G on right? The classroom?
Classroom on the right.
Yeah. Oh, that classroom, it just, it needed some work. So we're gonna do some paintings, floor, some ceiling work in there. And then the store room, you know, that's a really big thing for the ROTC. Between all types of storage in there, definitely, all of this uniform storage and stuff. It really needs to be climate controlled in there. So we're just trying to get all that ready for them so that he'll be able to kick off this fall, everything being done right.
I'll move, Mr. President, that we approve the project for the JROTC room not to exceed the amount of $23,480 to be funded out of. Mr. President.
I'll second that.
Or general.
Is that the general fund?
It is.
Yes, yes.
Out of general fund.
So it's a different company than the previous item on here? The similar name?
It's the same one.
No, it's the same, I think it's the same one.
Oh, it's go, go up and say Carpentry on here, and it says Construction on number thirty-eight.
Right, this is Rust.
Carpentry, it's two different companies.
Yes.
It just happens to have the same name.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Robin to approve the Vols High School ROTC classroom and store room project not to exceed the amount of $23,480. Any questions or comments?
The only thing I'm gonna say, I'm glad the hard work of Mr. Dexter and his tutor did in putting that together for the ROTC program.
Absolutely.
And we're very happy to have that in our schools.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number forty, recommendation to transfer $300,000 from the transportation fund and the general fund to the bus reserve fund pending available funds. It's a trial for the future retrofit air conditioning and the purchase, purchasing of buses. Mr. Lynn?
Just basically, we, we had some money left in the regular transportation budget. We wanted to look at putting some of that in the transfer, in this bus reserve fund, so with the possibility of buying some buses, maybe even this fall. You know, the grant is out there, but we haven't heard anything about it, and it's really not looking like that's fixing to come forward. And, I mean, you've heard a lot about, a lot of the federal grants are kind of getting put aside for right now. So anyway, that, that's all this is, and what we, I talked with Ms. Mary a while ago, and what we would like to actually add to that is that we would do this yearly, pending available funds. So we would just like to add that to that. But this would really, it's, it's gonna allow us the opportunity to purchase those, some buses after the new year rolls over, if they're available. So we'll just kind of wait and see how that works out.
Oh, Mr. President, I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Ms. Mary, you have a question?
I just want to add to that. The last few years, we've noticed the savings from the budgeted amount, and this is a way to set some money aside for just buses in order to buy some things for the transportation system that wouldn't hurt the budget. That's what I'm saying.
Ms. Jill?
If nobody has any questions, Mr. President, I'm gonna make that motion.
And I'll say.
What y'all are doing is they keep doing it.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by Mr. Robin to transfer $300,000 from the transportation fund and the general fund to the bus reserve fund pending available funds. Now, are we gonna save this?
I'm gonna.
Amy?
Annual, Jill? We're busy with annual.
Or we can review, we can, we can.
Why don't we just bring it up?
I feel more comfortable if y'all would bring it up each year.
We'll leave it like.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
I don't.
This will allow for the future retrofit air con, air conditioning and the purchasing of buses. Any questions or comments on that one? All in favor? Ms. Mary?
So this is gonna be for the '24, '25 fiscal year, that's when we do it. If, at the end of the year, there's money available, I can do this.
It's the way I need one of those AC buses in that Bunky block. Well, actually, if you look at the way that's, what we did, we're gonna try to pick the bus with the least amount of mileage from each one of the blocks, and we're gonna get those retrofitted. And another thing I wanted to add here is that on that open PO that we kind of operate over during the year, it looks like we're gonna have some money after the end. So even part of that money will come out of it before we start grabbing it from the bus reserve fund, which will leave more money in there for when we do, it look like with the buses.
It's higher than what Mr. Wright would purpose.
Okay, hey, we want air-conditioned buses, so I can assure you, that's what we're headed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number forty-one, recommendation to approve a round of $48,000 from Ross Buses to retrofit three buses with AC. This will be funded out of the bus reserve fund. These three buses will come from each of the school blocks and will be the newest buses with, without AC, with the least amount of mileage, Mr. Lynn.
So that's what I'm talking about. So we just, we just have a job to hit. Yeah. Well, once again, we want to keep the bulk of this money available, the first one that you did, for buying those buses. And this one right here, it could end up coming out of that. But what we'd really like to do is, and, and I'm gonna tell you, Fred has done an excellent job of cutting down cost when we're, we're not sending near the number of places we used to to Ross. So that's the reason there's some money left in that open PO that we operate up under with Ross. So hopefully, most of that will come out of there, so there will be more money left in the bus reserve fund. But these are just to be retrofitted, some of the newer buses that are not air-conditioned now. Okay?
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
Oh, that's fine. Got a motion by, you can do.
I don't care.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Robin. Any discussion, a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by Ms. Amy to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Leading to adjourn. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.